Good evening. Welcome to the August 26, 2025 Meeting of the Oshkosh Comic Council. City Clerk, can you take the role?
Sure can. Flom?
Here.
Builo?
Here.
Stevenson is excused absent. Nichols is excused absent. Larson?
Here.
Spanbauer?
Here.
Mughawar?
Here.
We have five present.
Leading us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance will be Councilmember Flom.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't tell you Julie, but we're going to go off script for just a hot second if that's, if that's okay. Tonight happens to be City Clerk Bartlett's last council meeting with us.
Yep.
And wanted to take a moment to acknowledge your time here and your retirement and to say congratulations to you and a thank you as well. So for those who don't know, but it's been written about a little bit here, City Clerk Bartlett is retiring from the city of Oshkosh after serving in the public world for over 20 years. While she's our City Clerk currently, she started here 10 years ago working in the, as an admin assistant, has worked her way up over the last decade. And prior to us, joining us, she worked for the Ripon School District as well. So having spent a good majority of her professional career serving others, she's hanging it up very soon here. And we would like to say thank you for everything you've done for us here in the city of Oshkosh. Thank you for your service to this community. We're better off for you having served in this role and in other roles. And we just want to say big congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you get one of those? I still have no idea what door that opens.
I know. We'll figure it out.
Hopefully you'll figure it out.
Thank you so much. All right.
Now Julie, floor is yours if you'd like it.
Of course. All right. I just want to introduce our newest member of the Finance Department, Clara Pickett. Clara is our new Assistant Finance Director. She has a bachelor's degree in accounting from UW-Green Bay and has a certified public accountant. Clara started out her career in governmental auditing, working for Schink. She then became the Finance Director for the Village of Aloei. And then most recently, she was the Director of Finance and Administration for Kekona Utilities. With more than 15 years of government accounting experience, we are excited to have Clara joining our team here at Oshkosh. All right. I just want to say thank you to Julie for the introduction and for the opportunity to join the organization. I really look forward to working together and contributing to the city's success. So thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Let's see here. I do have two people registered to speak tonight. One's on an agenda item. The other just says cap. Bruce Byer, what item are you looking to speak to us on?
Franklin Rubin's not in, it's not that CIP.
Okay. Now would be a good time to speak to us under citizen statements. Please come on up, Mr. Byer.
I'm aware.
Right here, if you could, to that microphone. Welcome. I am. I can handle it.
First of all, I got a letter from the city saying that you were going to vote on the thing tonight, August 26, 2025, at 6:00 PM at City Hall. The council will be asked to approve the CIP plan at the meeting. I don't see that on the agenda. Is that on the agenda?
The plan?
The city council doesn't know what they're doing.
I don't know what letter you're referring to, but I think Mr. Robbie's coming up. Might you be able to shed a little light on what he's referring to?
Yes, that was one of the informational letters that came out from our office. If you recall, in the original budget approval calendar, the plan for the CIP was scheduled for tonight. There was a change in that calendar unfortunately that occurred after those letters were sent out to the public.
Why didn't they send me a change in the law thing then? Why waste my time?
Because I just got notified last Friday, so I could not get you a letter before tonight.
What's today?
Today is Tuesday.
So you're home in the weekend, you don't work?
No. And I was out of the office at a conference last week as well. But we just got notified last week that it changed.
As it's not on the agenda tonight, this is still an appropriate time to speak to us on your thoughts of whatever you had though, if you'd like to.
Oh, I would like to.
Yeah, please go. You've got up to five minutes total.
Oh, it may take longer than five minutes.
Let's try to keep it to it if we can.
Okay, I'll start now. My name is Bruce Byer. I live in 3196 Clearville Road, part of the Clearville Annexation. And I got a letter saying that they're going to put sewer and water in my street. First of all, why, why did you want to run a half, half the road with sewer and water, one year, half the next year? There's only four houses and a half a mile, and there's two farms, a 40 acre farm and 80 acre farm with no sewage needed. I don't know what they're going to do to the road, if they're going to put sewer and water and storm sewers in, or just leave the ditch there, or they're going to make the road wider, if they're going to move the telephone poles. Nothing, nothing has been informed to us on Clearville Road. Half the road is the town of Elgoma, half the road is the city of Oshkosh. What half is a town going to pay? What half is the city going to pay? Are the people that are in the town of Elgoma going to hook on the city's sewer and water without paying anything? It's going to cost me a lot of money. It's going to cost my brother-in-law, who is, owns a farm with his brothers. He's got 1,200 feet of sewer and water to pay for, for a cornfield. There's no houses. There's no buildings on there. There's no need for sewer and water to that farm, or the other farm is a bean field. There's a cornfield next to me. There's a 48, 80 acre farm on the half a mile, and that's where the half mile ends. That's going to be done this year. On the 9th Street, there's no sewer and water up to Clearville. They're going to have to put sewer and water up there first. Then they're, they're going to have to hook up. They're going to do half the road, one year, half the road the next. So my road is going to be tore up for two years, maybe three with 20th Street and, or 9th Street. The agreement between the city and the town of Elgoma, which was signed back in 2002 or '03, somewhere in there, it said that I've got five years to hook up to the water and sewer. So if this doesn't complete until 27, I'll be dead and buried before they have to hook up. And why are you doing this? A big cost to me to go on city water. I have a well. I have, my gas and light and water bill is about $135 a month. If I go on city water, it's going to cost me $100 a month just for water and sewer. So I mean, I'm losing. I've been losing ever since the city annexed me. They wouldn't use my garbage cans. They had to buy new garbage cans. The whole thing is a pay. I got to pay for runoff to run water in the ditch. The farmer pays nothing because he's got a crop on his, and I pay over $300 a year for water runoff. There's no water runoff on my land. But I got to pay for it anyway, because I'm in a city. Across the street, they don't have to pay for it. That's the town of Elgoma. The whole city, it's costing me a lot of money for nothing. My taxes went up over $1,000 for absolutely nothing. There was no change. The only change was they didn't pick up my garbage because they had the wrong container. But that's the city of Oshkosh. I'm not real happy with the whole, the whole deal. Is there any questions? Here and now, I'll go back and sit down.
I do not see any questions. Thank you, Mr. Byer. Moving on, we have consent agenda. I'll take a motion and a second for consent.
So moved, second.
And it's noted, I don't have anyone registered to speak on any of these. Mr. Builo first.
Diane, I apologize for not getting these to you ahead of time. We're going to be pulling a couple of them. Number 15, which is Resolution 25444, number 21, Resolution 25450, number 22, which is 25451, and Resolution 29, which is 25458.
What was that first one you mentioned?
Number 15, 25444.
Got it.
Four total.
Thank you.
Four total that I know of.
I have four.
Is there any comments on consent minus those four items from council? Okay. If you're ready, we'll take the role on consent minus those four. Resolution 25444, 450, 451, and 458.
Thank you. Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Consent was carried at five.
So first item up, Resolution 25-444. Mr. Builo?
I move to lay this over to the September 9th meeting for further investigation and communication.
I'll second that. Any discussion from council on a motion to lay over? Seeing none. If you'll take the role on laying over 25444 to the September 9th meeting.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five to lay over.
Resolution 25450. Councilmember Builo?
I move to lay this over to September 9th for further investigation and communication.
I'll second. Go right ahead. Mr. Flom, right?
Yep.
Any discussion on the motion to lay over? See none. When you're ready, it was Flom for the second.
Flom for the second, thank you.
When you're ready, if you'll take the role on laying over 450 to September 9th.
Sure. Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five to lay over.
Resolution 25-451. This is approved as special event. UW-Oshkosh utilized city streets for their move-in days, August 31st through September 1st. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? I see none. If you'll call, take the role on 451.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Present.
Mughawar?
Aye.
We have 401 present to lay over.
Nope, to approve.
That was.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was to go.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Resolution 25-458, approved special event. UW-Oshkosh Athletics to host UW-Oshkosh home football games at J.J. Keller Field at multiple dates this fall.
So moved, second.
Discussion. I see none. When you're ready, please take the role on 458.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Present.
Mughawar?
Aye.
That carried four, I'm sorry, yeah, 401 present.
All right. We have just a few pending ordinances. This is the second reading for a few, for three of these. Ordinance 25461, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on 16th Avenue. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? I see none. Please take the role.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five.
Ordinance 25-462, amend parking and loading zone regulations on Elgoma Boulevard in front of Reed Elementary School. I'll take a motion in a second.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Please take the role.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five.
Ordinance 25-463, amend section 2-10B of the city of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to regular meetings of the Comic Council to provide for establishment of annual schedule of meetings.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Moving right along. I see none. Please take the role.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five.
We have one new ordinance. This will be the first reading. No formal action taken tonight. It'll come back at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Ordinance 25-464, amend section 27A-11 of the municipal code pertaining to parking regulations on Washington Avenue. And I have no one here to speak on that. Last action item for this evening, Resolution 25-465, approve combination class B liquor license for Water City Pub at 216 Main Street. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
So moved, second.
Any discussion on this item? See none. Please take the role on 25465.
Flom?
Aye.
Builo?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Spanbauer?
Aye.
Mughawar?
Aye.
Carried five.
That wraps up the action items for this evening. We move into council discussion. Direction to city manager and future agenda items. 37A, this is direction to staff regarding regulation of e-bikes, motorbikes, and bicycles on sidewalks and in bike lanes. I do have someone registered to speak to us on that before we begin. Jacob Claymire, welcome. Please come on up. If we could keep it to five minutes and the subject matter at hand.
Hey, everybody. My name is Jacob Claymire. My address is 505 Hobbs Avenue. Here to discuss the e-bike, motor, potential issue that we've been seeing and getting complaints of in the city. I'm here today because I'm sure like everybody else here, really excited and hopeful for the health of our community and like everybody that lives here, right? And I think that's where a lot of these complaints come from, is, you know, there's pedestrian safety at risk when you have an e-bike going at speeds near pedestrians. And I totally agree that's something that we should all be trying to address. I just came to provide a little bit of background. As a biker, an occasional e-biker, usually I'm using an analog bike, but I really enjoy getting out in the city and in biking, and I'm really grateful for the city and the infrastructure that they have built. So I did see in like the city report and recommendations, there's a couple definitions about e-bikes and motorbikes. I just wanted to clear some things up. There are some like legal classifications of e-bikes in the state of Wisconsin. They're listed by class, so class one, two, or three. They vary in their ability, both in speed, but also how they move. So I'd suggest that we update some of whatever regulations that the body may come up with, with those sorts of definitions. Another thing to consider is just how healthy biking can be for individuals. I think it's contributed a lot to my health, and I see it a lot in all the people that I bike with, that it's a form of activity, and it's also an accessible form of activity. And I think that's where a lot of e-bike customers and people are coming from, is that they're trying to get a little bit more active, right? They're trying to lessen the excuses almost to get out on a bike and go outside and have some fun. So I think it's good that we support not only the pedestrians, but the bikers as well, as well as the need for cars and such as well. So I know that there's been a lot of these complaints that we need to address, but I'd also like to point out, like, for every complaint that you hear from a pedestrian where there's a biker on the sidewalk, I would almost read that as there's a biker that doesn't feel safe being on the road, really where they should be. You know, they're choosing to go on the sidewalk instead of the road, even though that's an option to them, right? So we have to think about what options are available to them and how they're assessing that risk. And I think that kind of is where I'd like this to go, is that we focus on the areas without bike infrastructure as the areas that could be potentially improved, both in infrastructure, but also improved in the safety of those pedestrians that are potentially at risk. So if your, the city recommendation was to ban the use of motors within sidewalk areas, and I think that would be a great option for areas that don't have bike, or that have bike infrastructure, right? So if you have an option to go on the road, you should be taking it as a bike or as an e-bike. And I wanted to also address just like, why not, why not ban it on all sidewalks, right? Why not use the use of motors? I'll say, just this weekend, I saw two folks, elderly gentlemen that were using e-bikes. One was in a city park, just going fishing. And it was, you know, just having a nice afternoon. The other guy, he was headed for one of the bridges. And even as a regular biker that feels fairly comfortable in the roads, the bridges are pretty big hills, and you slow down quite a bit when you're going over it. So the traffic can feel kind of fast. So that would be another area where I think those e-motors are helping those folks get out and about. Also, the frontage road, of course, is an area too, where the speed limits can be a little bit higher. So I think as the city studies what sort of classifications of e-bikes, and kind of comparing that to the speed limits, that might be a good reference on how to structure increasing pedestrian safety. So I think that's about five minutes perhaps. So thanks so much for your time, and thanks so much for bringing up this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who brought this one. Is this you?
You can look at me.
This sounds like something you that.
It does sound like something. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
I don't know who wants to kick off.
I can start. Just because you looked at me and you said it sounded like something I would do. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Larson, the floor is yours.
No, this is something that I did. I mean, Chief Smith and I have been talking about it for a minute. I live and work in downtown. I spend a lot of time in downtown. That's where I see the most dangerous issues. And Jacob, I appreciate your feedback tonight. It's great. And we agree on so much. This is awesome. And I all agree in the end, I think as well. But Jacob made some great points. I happen to have a video I took of an incident happening where it's a little scary in downtown. I think everybody saw it because 12,000 people saw it. So probably a lot of people here saw it. And I asked for feedback, which is how I view this role, right? I think that's what my job here is, is to ask people what they think. And overwhelmingly, people seem to agree that there are instances where having an e-bike really close to a building where people can walk out of it if they're shopping is dangerous. I love Jacob's suggestion that we classify it by where there's bike infrastructure. I think that's hard, and that's hard to enforce. So I'll keep it a little brief, which I know is different for me also. Thank you, Matt. But most of the feedback I got is that, and I should also clarify, I like two-wheeled things. The slow roll is my event. I ride motorcycles. This is things I advocate for. So I'm all for people of all ages being able to ride the thing that they want to ride. And I think it's a great viable mode of transportation that we've never had until a little bit ago. So there are all kinds of good reasons that e-bikes should be used by people safely. The only place that I see them being difficult is when somebody can walk out of a business or a storefront directly adjacent to a sidewalk. That presents an incredibly dangerous situation. And the only reason I've been talking about it to Dean or anybody else is to avoid that part of it. So my take, if we're talking about direction, which we are, would be that we limit it not everywhere by any means, because there's too many good benefits to it. But in areas that are directly adjacent to a building is the good starting point for me. And I think that's the way to make it safer. It's also really easy to enforce. I love the suggestions that there are different classes of bikes, and we need to know how fast they go, how, who can ride them. That's really hard to know from 150 feet away, but knowing that you're riding next to a building on a sidewalk is really easy to see. So this is simpler for the police, simpler to enforce, and is a nice way to get that safety piece in play. I'll leave it there.
What's up?
Medium short for me.
Councilmember Builo, followed by Mr. Spanbauer, and then Mr. Flom.
Everybody lit up. This is a tough one, only because there are so many varied types of e-bikes. Some of them are basically motorcycles with pedals that are decorative. They don't actually, you can't just ride them with the, with the pedals. They don't provide enough power to itself. Some of them are basically mopeds with pedals, and some of them are e-assist bikes to assist with mobility. I love all two-wheeled vehicles, much like Councilmember Larson, and I want to see a way that these can be utilized and be in a more safe way. I, with the three different classifications that are based on wattage and what they can do and how fast they can go, it's already complicated to know, for some people, what they're buying. And, you know, does it require a registration and insurance? And, you know, should it have that? Only because it has pedals on it, they call it a bike, and it really is something more powerful than that. Downtown on Main Street, I would definitely support not having them on the sidewalks. There are areas, you know, very, very close that you can ride around that and still get to all the businesses that you want to go. I really like the recommendation from the city that they, the city staff kind of said, allow e-bikes and motorbikes on sidewalks only in pedaling mode. The problem is many of these bikes are not made to really propel themselves with the pedal mode. Like, it is physically impossible to get over five, six miles an hour on some of them, and they're just not made for it. I don't have a great solution. I'm open to more discussion, but that's the things that I wanted to bring up, is that anything that we come up with needs to not only be enforceable, but communicable, because it's easy for me to say. Something that we can communicate with people, because like, there are so many different classes and different uses. There's also, in my opinion, a difference between somebody using it to supplement the amount of distance or that they can ride, or a 20-year-old who's just out having fun going 45 miles an hour down the road because it's a toy at that point. And both are legit uses, but one of those is a little bit more dangerous.
Councilmember Spanbauer?
Yeah, I had several people reach out to me about this. And so I also kind of passed this up to, to city staff. Lots of folks saying that they were just walking down the street, walking down the sidewalk, and someone comes along at 30 miles per hour on a bike. That just feels very dangerous. In regards to what staff have sort of suggested, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm a bit on the fence about sort of where we land on this or what our kind of next steps are. I'm always in favor of getting more data. I'd like to see some data on, to our public comment point tonight about incidents involving bikes on the roads. I think for a long time, there's been some issues with culture around biking infrastructure on our city streets. And so I think that is something that we should always be looking at and encouraging. I know in lots of communities, bicycles are not allowed on the sidewalks. They are really only permitted to be on the city streets. And so I think with proper infrastructure, that's a direction I would like to see us go. However, you know, I do see folks biking and e-biking on trails in the parks and other sorts of things. I don't want to, you know, negate any of that either. But I do think we really need to take the public safety aspect of this pretty seriously. I mean, I would just hate to see someone get hit by a bike or a scooter or anything in this kind of, you know, accelerated mode just because they're trying to walk down the sidewalk and go to a business.
Councilmember Flom?
Couple things. I do like the third option here. The problem is, kind of pertaining to what Councilmember Builo said, you know, these are big, heavy items. Sometimes they have battery packs or really tough to pedal. For me, I want to balance the public safety aspect with the accessibility aspect. People depend on, you know, these bikes to go from place to place. They really enjoy using them. I don't want to take that away from people. For me, keeping them off the sidewalks where accessible bike lanes exist, I think is a very common sense option, especially on Main Street, Oregon Street. I used to live on Main Street myself. I would see e-bikes was passed on the sidewalk. But also kind of understanding that, you know, in certain circumstances, these bikes can't go on the road. So for me, I'd like to see if we could get them off the sidewalks where they can go on the road. That would be the most, you know, the best option for me, because, you know, like I said earlier, I don't want to ban the ownership of these in Oshkosh, having a soft ban essentially.
a soft ban essentially. I don't think that's the right way to go. However, balancing that public safety aspect is an important item. I think, you know, enforcement is going to be difficult on this, no matter what you slice it, but also a public education aspect could be part of that, instead of just doing hard enforcement all the time. You know, in the dense population areas, in the city core and whatnot, getting them off the sidewalk is probably the most important item for me, and making sure that they stay in the streets. So that's where I stand on this. I don't want to, you know, deter people from purchasing an e-bike in Oshkosh. I think, you know, if you want to buy an e-bike, by all means, buy an e-bike. It's not really the city's job to dictate those purchases. However, putting some common sense framework around this would be helpful for the public safety aspect. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Washington?
I forgot two things, I'm sorry, you knew it was too short. The pedal mode thing, I understand to a degree, but that's something we talked about a fair amount. There's no real way to know whether somebody is engaged in their power mode, if they're pedaling or not pedaling, so it just makes it really hard to enforce. That's why I kind of am leaning towards what makes it clear from a visual perspective from far, far away. I forgot to point out, I think, Matt, you were the only one on council at the time, but we currently do have an ordinance in Oshkosh that says e-scooters are not allowed in any sidewalk, anywhere, ever, period, end of story. Because that's how that council decided to do it. It was for a whole different impetus, that we don't need to get into why it was. It was a very interesting conversation, because I watched it happen. But as we're thinking about this, it's probably important to be clear about what types of things go which places for what reason. Because if we're going to say e-bikes are allowed in trails and parks, which they absolutely should be, because it's a great use for them, probably scooters should be as well, and currently, they're not. They're only allowed in the street. So we chose the least safe option for scooters for the wrong reason, in my opinion, way back a long time ago. But this is a chance to clean that part up as well, and make some safety decisions based on the best cases and the best uses for these things, without banning things for where they don't belong.
I'm glad you brought that up, because...
You didn't think I was going to forget about that?
Well, it's actually right on my screen, just waiting for my turn to talk about as well. We agree on some parts, we may disagree on other parts, though, of it. It is worth noting, section 27-66.4 strictly, clearly prohibits the operation of any electric scooter or electric personal assisted mobility device, we've defined that as a Segway-type thing, on roadways, having more than 25 miles an hour, and they're expressly prohibited on sidewalks as well. I think it could be simple enough to mirror this for e-bikes, period. There are scooters that are manually powered, there are bikes that are manually powered, and I think this is, this is a safer alternative to our current situation. But with that said, I also caution us against overreacting to. Yes, some communities allow bikes on sidewalks, some don't. As a father of three kids, in some of the roads in this, in this city, I don't want them driving their bike in the road, that there's just, there's some unsafe places to do so. So they should be on the sidewalk, because that's just safer for them. Even if it was against the rules, I'd still be teaching them to do that, because that would just be safer for them to do so. But I absolutely get, there is a safety concern when you have electric, motorized, two-wheel vehicles screaming at you down a sidewalk or down a trail, that can be dangerous as well. So just, I caution overreaction. I would like to simply mirror, if we can, 27-66.4, but to Mr. Larson's point, and I'm going to look at City Attorney Lawrence, and I don't expect an answer now, but I remember during that discussion, there was, there was talk of, we had to be careful, because we have to treat some of these things equally. We can't start picking and choosing a winner and a loser in some of the discussion here in terms of, we can do one for one, but we can't do it for another, and I just want to make sure that we also...
That's particularly true with bikes, so it's, yeah, something to be watchful for.
Very, that we can't just pick and choose where, what, and how. We do have to try to balance all those things, and it's, it may not be easy. But that's kind of where I sit on the topic. I also think this may be a space for us, individually or collectively, to exercise some of our, or to use some of our relationships with our state legislators. This is another area where I think the state is just a little behind, and that's standard with government, I think in general, that's a fair thing to say. Government should not be leading on many things, they tend to have to react, and this is where the market is really pushing these types of vehicles. There's a consumer, consumers are interested in them, and these things are getting faster and having more capabilities, and I think some of the laws and the orgs, ordinances behind, behind these things and helping protect communities may just be a little antiquated. So it may be something that we should be talking about with our legislators to help us, because there are some interesting definitions out there, in what is classified as one and what is classified as another. So just some thoughts on that, I guess. Mr. Bulo, floor is yours.
I, like Councilmember Larson, I forgot something, and that's my favorite part of this, or the part that I agree with most, and that I think it should be referred to the Transportation Committee for review and recommendation. I don't think this is going to be something that we can do quick or easy, I think it's going to be complicated, and I think it's going to review, require a lot of input and investigation to make sure that we get a wise decision when we're done, especially looking at the laws and what we can and can't do, to not make, to make sure we don't open ourselves up. So that would be what I would want to see as the next step.
Is council, dissolve council behind that, to defer this to Transportation Committee for them to review and make a recommendation on how to best move forward?
I'm most of the way there. I'm a little indifferent about that part of it. I think this is simpler than it is, but that's just because I spent a lot of time reading through the state part of it in the classification. So for me, I think it's pretty simple to say that there are some areas where this shouldn't be the case, that there shouldn't be any bikes on sidewalks, because that's enforceable. But if we want to take it to Transportation, instead of just saying that, that's fine. My personal direction would be, because I'm worried about it tomorrow, you know what I mean? I'm worried about it tomorrow morning, because I see it literally all the time, but that's just because of where I am geographically, and that, to me, is a simple solution. But it's not about me, it's about the feedback that we get, and about making the process correct. So I'm concerned about the timeliness of it, just for the safety aspect, and I don't like when things take a long time, in general. So there's that.
I think, no, I can appreciate that. And I don't think any of us disagree with, would disagree with that. I think one thing is, for me, it can be dangerous for us, this isn't, this will require an ordinance update.
Yep.
And I don't think we should attempt to make ordinance is or ordinance updates on the fly. I think we should be as well-informed as possible when we're making things, when we're changing or adding new laws to the books, and this is a way to make sure that the public has a, has a step in that participation process.
So then, yes, I'll, if the direction is, let's evaluate this based on the fact that we know something needs to happen, let's let Transportation look at it with staff, and come back to us as soon as they can with something that improves public safety. Sounds great.
I'm fine with that.
Good.
It makes sense. I understand both sides of this, the public safety aspect versus, I want to get this right, so, and fine with having Transportation take a look at it and having it referred back to us.
I saw a nodding head down there, I'm not supposed to allow that.
Great, yes.
Thank you. I think you've got some direction, at least to send this to Transportation for some review and a reporting back. They can also get the transcript or watch this little discussion of ours in terms of, if they want direction from us. I think we were, we were mildly clear on our direction in terms of what we may be looking for, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Future agenda items, meetings, workshops.